Thank you all very much. And we don't have a, a, uh...
Spot light?
So next section is public comments? Usually we have a spotlight, but we didn't have one today.
I asked for a few minutes.
No respect.
No respect at all. All right, so public comments, Mr. Kasimis?
Public comments. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming out. Our public comments, as you know, is, uh, we, when I call your name, please come to the podium. You'll have three minutes. Please keep your comments civil. When you see my hand raised, it means you have 30 seconds left. Also, we need your name and your address before you begin. And in three minutes, exactly my phone will ring, and we ask that you close. First, we have Lisa Kaplan.
You can bend it down.
Yes.
I don't want to eat it. Okay. My name is Lisa Kaplan. I live on Heritage Hill Road in Norwalk, but I'm here on behalf of Tracy School because I'm a teacher there. Dear Board of Ed members, my name is Lisa Kaplan, and I am a first-grade teacher at Tracy School. I am here on behalf of the students, teachers, and parents to request permission to name our gymnasium in honor of our retiring school principal, Dr. Paul A. Krasnawich. Dr. K., as he is affectionately known, has an extensive background of accomplishments and experiences directly linked to Norwalk. He grew up in Norwalk and attended Norwalk High School. Dr. K. was a scholar-athlete, all-FCAC football player, and went on to Rutgers University, where he was a three-year letterman and an NCAA scholar-athlete. After teaching and coaching in Maine, he returned to Norwalk in 1986 to teach science at Norwalk High School and coached the Bears in football. He was also assistant track coach and kept the wrestling program afloat until a new coach was named. He became the Director of Athletics, Physical Education, and Health before assuming the position of Principal of Tracy School in 1995, 20 years ago. While at Tracy, Dr. K. has made it his business to know the name of every student and support the staff in a myriad of ways. He is a caring listener to all and has a smile when you need it most. He is understanding and supportive. Under his watch, he has consistently sought programs to enhance the learning of our students. This has included vertical teams, Readers &amp; Writers Workshop, extensive changes to our ELL program utilizing PSYOP, which is a program that helps meet the needs of our diversified population, and the theory of brain-based learning linked to Dr. Eric Jensen, a highly-recognized scholar in neuroscience. Dr. K. is a go-getter. Under his leadership, again, we were awarded the Comprehensive Reform Grant for a three-year period worth over $100,000, which enabled him to hire more staff to meet the needs of our students. Tracy School was also the recipient of the Fairfield County Academic Aid Award provided by the Lone Pine Foundation. Our school also serves as a community center for the neighborhood with various workshops for parents. School spirit ranks high in his list for the students and staff. We here at Tracy are making huge strides each and every day with him at the helm. Dr. K.'s philosophy is to make a positive lasting difference in the way we learn. At Tracy School, we feel that these accomplishments deserve special recognition from the community of Norwalk. Therefore, we are asking permission for you to vote tonight, because there's a time constraint, on approving our request to dedicate the gym to him. We will mark this occasion with a plaque to be placed above the student gym doors in June. There is a school fundraiser this evening to raise money for a staff member deeply in need. So on behalf of the absentee Tracy family members, I thank you, and please consider this the vote for tonight because, you know, there is a time constraint. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, we have Ms. Lori Hall.
Good evening. My name is Lori Hall, and I live at 2 Rising Road in Norwalk. I have been a Norwalk taxpayer for 32 years, and I'm former 21-year Board of Education employee. I am concerned that a Board of Education employee in a position of power at central office is not doing his job and abusing his power. I have contacted the employee, the head of Human Resources, and our former superintendent, and been ignored by all three. I am coming to you because the buck stops here, and I want this matter, I want this to be a matter of public record. During a meeting with Mr. Morris, Director of Human Relations at Fox Run School, Mr. Morris repeatedly made false accusation against me. After proving him wrong, I accused him of harassment and told him I was going to hire an attorney. At that time, I was employed by the YMCA After-Care Program at Fox Run. Interestingly, after my mention of retaining an attorney, Mr. Morris contacted my boss at the Y, and I was told to leave Fox Run immediately. That same day, an email dated October 21st, 2014, from Bruce Morris was sent to the Norwalk YMCA Child Care Coordinator stating, and I quote, "Ms. Lori Hall is not to be assigned to a program on Norwalk Public Schools buildings or programs," end quote. This caused my termination from my Y after-school job because it was on school property and no reason was given. I questioned Mr. Lee Palmer, Chief of Human Resources, as to the reason for the ban. Instead of supplying me with a reason, I was told that Mr. Morris would be conducting an internal investigation and would be sending me the findings. That email was dated October 23rd, 2014. At that time, I had a job interview scheduled at Marvin Elementary School. Mr. Palmer told me to cancel the interview. He told me if I showed up for the interview, I would, and again, I quote, "be escorted from the building." Why? No reason was given. He deferred to Mr. Morris. Mr. Morris promised several different dates when he would supply me with the report on the results of his internal investigation and failed to deliver. I had to turn down a job doing literacy evaluations because it involved going into Norwalk schools, and I still have no idea why I'm banned from every school in Norwalk. In addition, Mr. Morris did not respond to my attorney with a report or date when a report would be completed. I believe Mr. Morris is depriving me of my rights, has and is continuing to bully me, is not doing his job, and is abusing his power. This ban is absurd, unsubstantiated, and arbitrary. This board reiterates that it's all about the kids. Mr. Morris has deprived someone who genuinely is all about the kids from working with them. He needs to produce a report showing just cause for why I should not be allowed to work in the Norwalk Public Schools buildings or programs, or apologize and rescind the ban. My, by inference, my character has been defamed. I am not letting this drop until the matter is resolved.
Thank you. Okay, next, we have Mr. John Mosby.
My name is John Mosby. I live at 15 Addison Avenue, Norwalk, Connecticut. Tonight, I'm gonna be very brief. I left a note for you Board members to protest at the way I was treated at the last Board of Education meeting. Now, I've been coming to a lot of these Board meetings. They've always been professional for everybody. But at that meeting, I was here when we dumped the players to the ledger, and everybody decided, she normally beat up, everybody signed in. So I came up and asked the secretary, and she, well, no, she there. Other people had signed up, and normal what you do, you leave it out until you go through there with the kids and all, and let them go home. Then everybody had signed. Then Mr. Artis come down and picked the paper up. On that night, I didn't see the paper. Then when you, he said, "public comment," he had it up there. And once the five people spoke, I put my hand up and asked that I wanted to speak, and everybody ignored me. That is wrong. Now, I want to say to you, the Board of Ed tonight, everybody know I'm outspoken, and I'm gonna keep on being outspoken. Special Ed of all way for three years, I spoke about the way the old showman been treated. We read in the paper over and over about the way these kids are treated. I spoke to Dr. Mark. I spoke to Dr. Rivera, and I talked to the new superintendent. But I'm gonna say this for the record. For some reason, these people don't get it. I have never seen a Board of Education do everything in the back room so secret. The parents are left out of everything. The community left out of everything. You bring in all these extra groups, you're all in the back room. This is wrong. You're gonna have to involve our kids, but I got special-ed kids in the public school. You all supposed to listen to us. We are no one. And a lot of this money's been, in my opinion, being misspent. We need an auditor. Something is wrong with all this money. One time, we paid $200,000. I know that was a lie. Then the superintendent come, oh yeah, was $70,000. Something is wrong in this school system. We need to look out and have people accountable what's going on with this money. I am very concerned. And in your Board of Ed, I'm not, all of y'all, you all responsible here for what we have to say, and y'all ignore us. So I'm asking you tonight to address my letter I gave you tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Mr. Bruce Millian.
Good evening. Bruce Millian, 9 Mod Avenue. Tonight, under Roman numeral five, item five, is gonna be an action item on the block scheduling. And I want to make some comments on that, and some people I'm sure are gonna talk about as well, and the draft came to you at the last meeting. What you're receiving, just so everyone's clear, is just basically an outline, so to speak, of where we might be going with the block scheduling after the committee did their work, after they made, I think, three visitations. But beyond that, there's a lot of detail that has to be worked out, and it should be understood that that is not a final and finished. If anything, it's a draft of a conceptual nature. Also, what's extremely important, and came up before in the meeting, curriculum meeting, is that the professional development must take place next year, a high-level professional development of great quality. Some of it is general in nature for all the teachers, and some of it will be subject-specific so that teachers in various disciplines would visit schools and see how it operates and understand the nuances and the potential problems, if we're gonna roll it out for the 2016-2017 school year. But we've got to do it with all the details on the table so everybody understands it, again, with high-quality professional development of a general nature and also specific nature. We're not opposed to it, but we just want it done correctly. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, we have Ms. Sue Haney.
Good evening. Sue Haney, 7 Christopher Lane, Norwalk, Connecticut. First off, to Rich Roodel, great loss to Norwalk, and all the best in your new job. Literacy for Parents for Their Children is a reading program run by Bruce Millian of the Norwalk Federation of Teachers with a couple of teachers, neither of which has any expertise in literacy. There's been no collaboration. Everything's a secret, and the presentations are invite-only. Norwalk Central Office has had nothing to do with it, nor has the early Childhood Council or the various Norwalk Acts agencies. The State Department of Ed says it has nothing to do with the program. Literacy for Norwalk, Literacy for Parents for Their Children is, has existed on a nod and a wink, targeting the most vulnerable parents and children, Title I. Why does Norwalk Public Schools know nothing about this program? And why are taxpayers funding a program the district knows nothing about? $145,000 plus or minus for four sessions. That's about $36,000 a session. Why is the curriculum of a program funded by tax dollars proprietary? And who allowed the Norwalk Federation of Teachers access to parent and student contact information at Brookside, Kendall, Tracy, Silvermine, Marvin, and Jefferson, all Title I schools? If Norwalk had no involvement or oversight of this program, who gave this group access to student information and parent emails? What about FERPA? With all due respect, Interim Superintendent Connolly, you're doing the best you can in the short time you've been here, and thank you. However, Norwalk needs a new permanent superintendent as soon as possible, someone strong and tough so these kind of shenanigans can't be allowed to continue. Title I parents are being served leftovers, and taxpayers are paying for steak. Throw this program away and start over again under the new superintendent because, to borrow a phrase, "literacy for parents for their children" is a perfect example of how mediocrity gets institutionalized when no one is watching. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, there's all the signed up. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is superintendent's report. Mr. Connolly.
Good evening. Several things, but I'll try to be brief because we will have pretty extensive discussion, particularly on block scheduling. I don't know if any of you tonight, I know the mayor joined me about an hour ago down at the community room here in City Hall, and we had, I know we exceeded the capacity of the room on, on parents and family members that came to, to view the artwork of their students. It was truly amazing, and it will continue tomorrow and on Thursday. So if you haven't had a chance to go in there, please go. It's, it's creative. I got put on the spot. You always like to go in and say, "Everything is wonderful. Everyone's a winner," and they really were, but I had to choose nine that, that were tagged, and they will be, they will be permanently exhibited up in the third floor here at the Ralph Sloan Gallery. But it's something Norwalk should be very proud of, and it, to me, it just underscores the effectiveness of our art program. Sometimes we look at budgets and art, and those type of programs become throwaways. And I think we could prove here in Norwalk that we have a quality, extensive program that in many ways, the four people who helped me make my nine decisions were all graduates of either Brian McMahon, Briggs, or Norwalk High School, and all of them now are in the art world as printmakers, as photographers, as artists. So it's a quality program, and I'm very glad that we were able to showcase it tonight. I don't know, Mayor, if you had any comments on what you saw, but I was totally impressed.
The thing that was most impressive was the, were the number of parents that came to support their children and show them how proud they were of their artwork. It was really stimulating to the children's minds, and that's really what happens a lot in Norwalk Public Schools. They show up child's mind, get stimulated, and they get challenged, and it was really, really a great thing. So thank you for allowing me to speak on that.
The, three other things, and there are more for the record. The media has beat me to the punch on most of these. First, for the record, Brian McMahon High School has been officially accepted as a candidate school for the International Baccalaureate Program. That's quite prestigious, and it was all due to the hard work of the principal, Suzanne Corochez, teachers Julie Barnum, Kristy Carrero, and committee members Scott Hurwitz and Roz McCarthy that supported this effort. The students that will be able to receive an baccalaureate, international baccalaureate diploma from the high school will be today's eighth-grade class. So we have, we have probationary status for two years, and then the program will go, will go fully, and today's eighth graders, when they're 10th graders, they will be able to start enrolling in some of the courses that are part of the International Baccalaureate Program. So again, kudos to the staff at, at Brian McMahon High School, and kudos for the school district. This, again, becomes a real high-quality option for students, and I hope it keeps some secondary students in the Norwalk Public Schools because you can't, the tuition that you would go to for some of our private schools, the quality of education, the international baccalaureate, its international recognition by universities throughout the world is truly, is truly quality. And if I were a parent and had this option, I would certainly exercise it and keep my child here at Brian McMahon High School in that program. Secondly, not all of you picked this up, but the U.S. News &amp; World reports did the rankings on their, and I don't, when you don't get in, I disagree with the formula. But when you get in, I say the formula works. But they, they reviewed all the high schools in the country. They reviewed 193 here in Connecticut. They indicated that, they, they announced the top 50, and, and Brian McMahon High School, again, was 41, number 41 in the top 50. It's, I think, again, it's an honor, and it's a, it's another feather in Brian McMahon's cap. One of the things they look at are college readiness, math and reading proficiency, and student-to-teacher ratio. So Brian McMahon, all of those put together, achieved a ranking in the, in the top 50. And I think the only other urban high school in this area that were in the top 50 rankings were, was West Hill and Stanford. The third thing I'd like to report to the Board is a literacy program that we are developing with Fairfield U, the Annie Fowler Foundation, and the Grossman Family Foundation. This program started last year, and because of the lateness of the, of the concept, it took a year to go through the usual faculty, the faculty approvals at Fairfield University. But everything is online now, and this program is aimed at early literacy. It's aimed at, at children in districts like Norwalk who, who would need extra help in literacy. And what it's going to do, it's going to choose 10 teachers. Norwalk is one of the districts the teachers will be chosen from. Those teachers will participate in a special six-year program at Fairfield U. It's full-time. They'll be there full-time for a year, and the program will pay for their full tuition and give them a living stipend, which amounts to about $30,000 a year. Certainly less than they'd be making as a teacher, but they'll get a, they'll get a six-year, fully paid for. And the, the commitment of the district is, when these people came, come back, do come back, we would try to put them in jobs that obviously would, would enhance our early literacy program. The hope is that many of these people will graduate from the program and will become our leaders in literacy, either as department chairs, as early childhood specialists, or as literacy specialists. So I'm very, very pleased. The program cost us nothing, but it puts, puts us in a cutting-edge. We will, in the next week or two, be targeting teachers. I don't know how many Norwalk can get admitted, but we'll be targeting our teachers in the kindergarten through grade three, grade four, to see if they're people that are interested. I realize it's a lifestyle change, and the stipend doesn't equal what they would make here in salary, but it does pay, but it gives them, you know, a fair stipend, and at the same time, it, it pays fully for their, for their six-year degree at Fairfield U. So I'm very happy to be in that program. I think we'll be joining about four or five other school districts, mostly along the, New Haven and Fairfield County, and participating. And the, and I'll talk a little bit later when we talk about the Tracy Elementary School Gymnasium dedication.
Thank you. All right, we'll proceed into Section 5 of the agenda. First item under Section 5 is the consent calendar, which tonight is personnel, which is one appointment, and approval of field trip to Isahara, Japan. Chair would make a motion, a motion moved by Mr. Kasimis, seconded by Ms. Keys to approve the consent calendar. Any questions, issues? Hearing none, we'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of approving the consent calendar, please indicate. And it is unanimous. Thank you. Next item is approval of the addendum to agreement for child nutrition program. Who's gonna take us through this one?
This is a technical amendment, and it really just affirms that we are committed to serving healthy food, or food that's, that's classified by the USDA, by the Child Nutrition Department as being healthy. So it's, it's what we're doing already, but I think we just have to attest to this in an addendum to the, to the EDO 99.
Okay. I'm assuming nobody's gonna have any problem with that. Is there a motion to approve? Mr. Kasimis, second. Ms. Reeve, second. Any discussion? Hearing none, proceed to a vote. All in favor of approving the resolution, please indicate. Motion is passed unanimously. Thank you. Item 4, approval of requirements for State Department of Education, approval of grant application for Norwalk Early Childhood Center.
Send to Vice Chair as...
You want to bring us up to speed on this, Artie?
Sure. Alan, can you come to the podium? Rich? This has to do with the Norwalk Early Childhood Center. Initially, we were hoping to have the Norwalk Early Childhood Center open this September, which was an aggressive timeline, and that didn't seem likely with approval from the state. We looked to possibly do all eight classrooms at once for the following school year. A number of items got triggered when we wanted to do eight classrooms, including changes to the parking structure, certain mechanicals, and it started to escalate the cost. So we took a step back to see what we could do to still move forward with the project. And looking at doing six classrooms in the existing space, AP Construction has given us a cost proposal of about $2.5 million, of which about $1.5 million are considered hard costs. There are about $177,000 of ineligible costs, making the total eligible cost about $2.3 million. Norwalk's reimbursement from the state is about 33 percent, so Norwalk's share of the project would be about $1.7 million. In a prior year, we had approved, the board had approved $771,000 for unexpended funds, and the city also put up a special capital appropriation of $880,000. Those two combined left us about $70,000 short of the $1.7 million that we needed. Many years back, the city had bonded a $70 million capital renovation project for schools like Brian McMahon. All those projects have officially been closed out. They've all been audited, and there is a balance of about $316,000 left in that capital account. And working with the city, we do have access to those funds, considering this is a school construction project. And while there's $316,000, the expectation is we're only gonna need about $60,000 to $70,000 of that $316,000.
We do have Alan and John here to talk about the project.
Sure. Hi, for the record, my name is John Ireland. I'm an architect with Silver Petroselli, and we've been working on, as Rich said, the Early Child Center for, you know, probably about six, seven months. As Rich said, we, we kind of went back, rethought, and relooked at the application both to the state and here programmatically within the use of the building. We've then looked at cost, looked at the program, and looked at the best way to control the cost and not sacrifice the program. So that's what AP put back together, priced for us, and we are now at the point where we're going to reapply to the state for that reimbursable cost that Rich mentioned. The plan essentially remains the same that you previously approved. So there will be six complete classrooms with their own age-appropriate toilet facilities, access within the classrooms, shared by each adjacent classroom, or in the case of a single classroom, its own age-appropriate toilet room. In addition to that, there are eight that we call them therapy rooms. They're used as offices, therapy, school programming. From there, entryway has been rethought and put back together to create a secure vestibule and lower some cost. I think if you were familiar with the plans, there was a more elaborate entry design. So we've scaled that back to be more cost-effective and not sacrifice, again, safety or program. From there, the floor plan, again, remains fairly unchanged, administrative offices, six classrooms, new toilet facilities, new mechanical equipment, new electrical, new lighting, new finishes throughout the program. So with that, I don't know, Alan, you want to add anything else?
Yes. Just a couple of other items. In the event that the board approves this project, the next step is actually going to the Norwalk Facility Construction Commission. Their meeting is scheduled for June 3rd, and right after that, it's a Subcommittee of Common Council, Land Use and Building Management Committee. They're gonna review this, the project, and thereafter, we send to the Common Council for their approval. All the monies are in place, and there's no special appropriation process required. So upon Common Council approval of the project, we will go to, we are required to submit to the state before June 30th. And our, our intent is to get a meeting with the state in the summer, and we look to go through the whole review process and approval, and we probably go out to bid in sometime in October, November, and possibly start construction in January 1st of 2016. And our intent is to finish the project by August 15th of 2016.
Okay.
That's about it.
Questions? Any questions from Board members? I do note, the, the cover memo properly points out that not only would consolidating these classrooms allow for improvement of the special education services for the children involved, but it also frees up space in several of our elementary schools that are, where space is really at a premium. So this is, we get a double benefit out of this in, in expanding the space of the, available of the elementary schools. I'm also glad that the, the existing gym, at least in the interim, will provide a resource for the children who are gonna be attending the program. All three of my kids went to Tumblebugs and spent a lot of time in the gym. So having, these kids having an opportunity to do that as, as part of the school day, I think is terrific. So my congratulations to Artie. I know you have something to say.
Really didn't do anything.
Well, you've, you've stayed on top of this for the board, and particularly for Well, you've stayed on top of this for the board, and particularly for you, gentlemen, for taking what looked like a disaster. I mean, we had this great program, and the next thing we know, it's been blown to smithereens. And you went back to the drawing board and came up with a way to save it, and kudos to, for your determination and not give it up and going back and figuring out a way to make it work. Artie?
No, I just want to say the same thing. Couple of months ago, I think all of us know, we were in jeopardy of losing the entire project, and I know Alan, Rich, I don't know, he's leaving, so I can't say that. But, you know, they did go back, and they really put their heads together and came back with a great new proposal, and I would, really would like to commend them. And I do ask for the board to approve this tonight.
Ms. Mosby?
Yeah. So the classes won't be available for students or children to attend to on August of 2016, correct?
Correct. Beginning of the next year.
Yes. And do we have plans now for the kids if they're going to stay where they're at? And then we'll just have to do another year.
Yep. I mean, you know, where they are now is workable.
Right.
This will just be an improvement when we get it done. Any other questions or comments? All right. Did I do a motion? Okay. Chair would entertain a motion moved by Mr. Kassimis to approve. Is there a second? Ms. Reeve, a second. And the motion technically is approving the five items that are in Alan's letter, which are all in the process. All right, if there's no other comments, we'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of the proposal, please indicate. And that is unanimous. Thank you again, gentlemen. Great job. Next item on the agenda is Approval of Block Scheduling for Bryan McMahon High School and Norwalk High School, effective for 2016, 2017 school year. Mr. Connolly, you want to start us off here?
Yes. Mr. Dodona is working with a committee, so I'll let him introduce the process, introduce the committee members, and go through the presentation, and then I think at the end we're all set for, I'm sure, a lot of questions.
Good evening, everyone. We had a committee made up of teachers and administrators from both Bryan McMahon High School and Norwalk High School, who researched various different schedules in preparation for high school reform. The committee also visited schools that had block scheduling, and the committee unanimously decided to go on and go forward in presenting block scheduling. At your seats, you have our PowerPoint, which they will present, and some research information on the benefits of block scheduling. So I am going to ask Barbara and Ed and Tom to do their presentation.
Good evening. We're just going to start with a little bit of background to the committee work. The committee has been working for this past school year, looking at models to propose moving forward for both high schools so that we could be on the same schedule. Just to acknowledge some of the committee members that aren't present this evening, from Norwalk High, we had Glenn Couture, Maureen Ireland, and another housemaster, Raymond Manka, who's ill and was not able to join us this evening. And then from Bryan McMahon, we had Katie Okrenowicz, Tom Suits, who is our Science Department Chair, Mr. Singleton from Central Office, myself, and Mr. Dodona, who was the committee head throughout this year. When the committee was formed, this just gives you a little background of what we were asked to do, and it was to really look at the daily schedule at both comprehensive high schools. For as long as I've been in the district, and I believe long before I was in the district, the two high schools have been on different schedules. So there's a number of reasons that we'll talk about, that getting onto one common schedule makes a lot of sense. And so we were looking at a common schedule that we mutually agreed upon, that would benefit all of the learners in the Norwalk public schools, and looking at trying to comply with the increased graduation credits that will be required of students beginning with the class of 2020. So currently, it's 20 credits. That's going to move to 25 credits. So that was, that's a pretty big shift, and that, so that's what the committee was charged with doing. Some of our priorities were to think about, you know, making sure that students were engaged in the learning. We want to maximize our instructional time, given that contractually, we have a certain length of day, and we weren't looking at changing the length of the school day. We were looking at how to maximize focus time on learning for all students. We wanted to increase contact time with students, and once again, we were trying to meet the increased credit requirements. And we also think it's very important that teachers have time to collaborate during the school day. Both high schools have some element of teacher collaboration, teachers who teach like subjects, getting together to talk about best practice, talk about, you know, going to each other's classrooms, really, you know, really focused on instruction. And once again, we were trying to look at models that would allow that to happen more frequently for all of our teachers. This is an outline of the process. We had a total of nine meetings, six where we met as a committee, and three where we actually went and visited different schools in Fairfield County. We looked at schools nationally, and we visited the ones locally. We went to Brookfield High School, we went to New Milford High School, and we went to the Academy of Information Technology and Engineering at Stanford. And then after each of those visits, we would debrief and talk about things, you know, that we were able to see, and we made a decision as to what our recommendation would be as far as we were going to recommend a block schedule. And then we presented it last week at the Curriculum Committee, and here we are tonight. And the plan, as we have proposed it, would be that during the 2015-16 school year, we would really focus on providing high-quality professional development to all staff so that they would be comfortable. And we asked a lot of questions about that on our visits, insofar as, you know, how did you really prepare your staff so that they, you know, were, they felt confident and they felt well-versed in best practice, so that when you have a class for 88 or 90 minutes, that you're not just standing up and lecturing, because certainly that would not be appropriate and would not be at all what we are recommending. But when we started to think about a lot of the new curriculum as it relates to the Common Core and 21st Century Learning, and you look at what we have proposed in the new curriculums, they're very student-centered, they allow for student exploration and student inquiry, and that is best done when you have a longer block of time that really allows students to really get into the content. So we talked about that a lot in our committee meetings. I would say a lot of time was spent focused on instruction and what that's going to look like every day.
In addition to that, we noticed that the teachers that we talked to when we visited some of the schools recommended that there be several transitions during the class period. So kids were not just sitting in one place in the classroom, they were up and about and being engaged and learned through activity, in addition to the presentation from the teacher as well.
Those are just the meeting dates. So what we're proposing, as we said, would be a, it's called a four-by-four block, and what that means is students would take eight classes, four, one through four meets on an A day, five through eight would meet on a B day. And they would be for approximately 88 minutes, depending on, you know, exactly the lunch schedule and what that would look like. What we see as the benefits, one, it's going to reduce study halls for both high schools. I know that's something that's been a concern, it's a concern on our part as well. Because of the way that that looks in science, the labs are absorbed in the block period, so you don't have those standalone periods that are opposite that lab period. So that will really reduce the number of study halls, increase time, as I said, for student-centered learning, where students are active in their own learning. Another big piece is students will have opportunities to take additional classes and additional credits. At Bryan McMahon, that's especially important, because right now, it's only possible to take seven classes. This will allow students more opportunity to take IB classes, advanced placement classes, elective classes, you know, you know, there's always a struggle between, let's say, world language and the musical programs. This does allow more opportunities to take courses. There are fewer whole-school transitions, which actually means you actually pick up instructional time, because every time you have a change of classes, it's four minutes. So we're actually going to cut that in half, so we actually pick up that instructional time. And every time you start and stop a class, you actually, there's lost instructional time because you're stopping, you're giving closure, you're, so you actually pick up instructional time just by reducing the number of transitions a student has to go through in the course of a day. And in the schools we visited, what they actually found was there's actually a decrease in disciplinary referrals, and one of the, one of the reasons is there's less transitions. One of the times when we tend to have increased disciplinary issues is passing times. So this will actually reduce passing times. They actually found that, you know, in some of the schools, there was an increase in attendance, a decrease in kids skipping classes, because it's not just a 45 minutes. Now, now you're talking about 88 minutes. So they actually found that kids were less likely to skip a class. There's more opportunities as far as the two high schools to share staff. I know with the program at Norwalk High, the NECA program, they need a schedule that will allow them to bring in the NCC professors that teach some of their courses, and this allows them more opportunity to have those professors. I know with the IB program, it's a benefit in terms of having those extended classes and, they also have advisors that they are going to be meeting with. Both high schools are exploring opportunities for seniors, for internships. Having that kind of schedule will actually make, sending a student out on an internship, let's say on a B day, periods five through eight, it actually makes that a lot easier. It also, as I said, allows for more sharing of staff.
With the internships, there will be a new requirement through C of Connecticut for a capstone, which all 12th graders would have to have completed by their 12th grade year or time for them to graduate. So this would actually be beneficial and would actually have time built into the school day to, for kids to be able to have access to their internship without having to have special circumstances.
You know, some of the challenges, and I think we've kind of mentioned these, is making sure that teachers feel confident in the instructional practices, that this kind of period of extended time, you can't just sit up and stand and lecture and hope someone's acquiring the knowledge. As Eddie said, it's important to have several transitions. It's important to monitor student learning throughout the period. Teachers are always doing these real-time assessments. Having extended block would allow for reteaching. As soon as you can, you know, a student doesn't understand something, there's this extended time where you can have an opportunity to reteach students who might need extended time for assessments, collaborative work, that's built in. Let's say I have a class, I used to be a history teacher, you know, we're investigating a problem of history, someone comes up with a great research question. With a 90-minute block, we can say, let's go down to our learning commons and explore that question. Let's everybody, you know, get one of our Chromebooks that we have available in the classroom, and really do some in-depth research. So those kinds of opportunities, when you have 90 minutes, it's a much greater depth of learning. You know, we're not trying to race through something because we don't have a lot of time. The science labs, and they're quite familiar with using that extended period for the inquiry learning, and that's really the direction the science curriculum is going in.
And that's what we've been doing already with our extended time. We have actually a 99-minute block right now, and I guarantee we get more out of 99-minute block than two 47-minute blocks, because you have that one large chunk of time. And even, you know, scale of the academics, music department, on one of our visits at Brookfield, I asked the music director, if we're thinking, how do you work with such a large group in a band or in chorus? He says, I don't have to practice, I have rehearsals now, because he can deal with an entire group and then break off certain segments and all that. So just, I think it's only good for the academic, no, it's good for every aspect of the whole school.
Even the PE teachers feel it gives them more time to teach a skill, let students practice a skill, and then implement that skill on the PE class, because we did try to talk to multiple departments, you know, how would this impact you? And, you know, overwhelmingly, they had positive feedback as far as going through the change, so long as, as we said, there's opportunities for the professional development.
In terms of college and career readiness, this gives, well, would give our students more of an opportunity to become more comfortable once they hit their university or their college campus as they matriculate and graduate from us. Students on the collegiate level and university level, as we know, are attending classes that are an hour to an hour and a half long. And students that are now leaving our schools now, they're doing well, but probably be more well-prepared and well-adjusted. Adjustment probably be less, having learned that skill at an early age in high school from grade nine to 12, to have to stay in classes or participate and be active in classes for at least 88 minutes or an hour and a half, or close to an hour and a half.
Last week, a question was asked that we wanted to kind of address, that, you know, how will this schedule impact students that might have special needs? Specifically, the question came up about students who might have attentional issues, you know? And once again, you know, I think a student with issues of attention, whether it's 47 or 90, I don't think those issues, you know, they don't go away. But I do think having the opportunity for transitions in that block period and using the instructional strategies that help focus students, and actually having opportunities for students to be active, as opposed to trying to sit and listen to a lecture and focus, will benefit those students. It will not result in any change in service hours for our students with special needs, i.e. if they receive services such as speech, language, or social work, some of the models that we're looking at will allow us time to actually provide those services without loss of instructional time, which sometimes can be difficult. Teachers will have training, as we mentioned, and one of the, we did ask some of the districts that we had visited about that issue, and they said that actually, for some of the students, having a maximum of four classes per day versus seven or eight, actually eased some of the anxiety, because students had less classes they had to focus on, they could just think about those four versus all seven, and that they found it to be a benefit, and they didn't necessarily see that it had a negative impact. But once again, I think the key is making sure that students are engaged in multiple activities. It also allows for extended time for some of our struggling learners that might need more time taking a test, instead of, you know, the 47 minutes, and now you've got to come after school, or you have to go take it there. Having that 90-minute block will allow some of that extra time to be built in. It allows for immediate reteaching, real time, rather than maybe having to wait until the next day. We can reteach after we assess. And more opportunity for individualized assistance that teachers are able to provide when they have the gift of time in that, in that period.
We're hearing a lot about the teacher preparation and teacher training, and to be honest, if we tried this five, six, seven years ago, it never would have happened. But because both schools are involved in PLCs and IDTs, and they're working collaboratively already, and coming up with common lessons, and coming up with some things that are working towards 21st century, this is an apple for breakfast. Wouldn't have happened five, six, seven years ago.
This is a model of a four-by-four block schedule. The thing that to note is, is you have to put the lunches in there somewhere. This particular model has four lunch shifts. We're not, I don't think we actually need four lunch shifts, we can probably do that in three, but this is just a model so you can see, you know, approximately what that looks like. This is New Milford?
Oh yeah, this is the New Milford schedule. And I do know that people were concerned about time. We just, actually just use their schedule with their time of how they see it at their standpoint, and then we would adjust the timing for what we currently have in place with both schools. So these are just samples and models of what they're using in their ideas of how they see their day and how they're functioning their day. Our time would be conducive to what we already have in place.
And can you elaborate on the flex time aspect?
Well, for the flex time, that's a time that Barbara mentioned, where, especially for our students with special needs, who received other services in addition to what they received in the classroom, i.e. speech, counseling services, social work. This will be a time where during the day where they'll have their lunch period, they will also have a time to see their counselor or their related service provider. Or for students who might have lessons, I know this would also help to reduce some pullouts for band and choir, so if there's some lessons that students need to see, they need to see group section or sectional rehearsals, they can do that during a scheduled flex period, as opposed to being pulled out, sort of the way it's being done now, kids are being pulled out of some classes. So it'll be a time built in our day where kids will be able to get to places that they need to be without impacting their academics.
And both schools also have the advisories, so that would be also a time when the advisors meet with their advisees at both high schools. Students could seek extra help during that time, it could be an opportunity for different clubs to meet. clubs to meet at that time as well, instead of having to be after the school day.
Okay, thank you.
This is the same schedule, just looks a little bit different.
That's with two lunches instead of three?
Right, yes.
That's probably your next stage, right?
Yeah, sure.
If it's timely.
Question?
I have a question. There's some recent research that says, that points to high school, oh, high schoolers starting later. I don't know if you've thought about that, was that part of this research and study?
It really wasn't the charge of our particular committee, because we don't, you know, we don't have any control over the time of the school day. So to be honest, it really wasn't something that we considered, because it was kind of beyond the scope of what we were looking at. We didn't look at any time change in instructional time, because we don't have control of that.
Okay.
And I think already at the curriculum committee, we did discuss that a little bit, Barbara did bring that up, and I think, you know, we said this would be a topic with our next superintendent, that's something we'd want to consider. And I think if you recall, in one of the interviews we had, somebody had talked about that that had been done, and I think, maybe you guys have talked about it, the curriculum committee, that Meriden had moved their schedule to start later. So, so there's, I mean, so I think it's something we'll want to consider, but it was not part of their charge.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I remember at the committee discussion, it was also when it was brought out with the example of some schools that had done that, that they had managed to do it without disrupting sports programs.
Correct.
So you can do it, and, you know, I think, obviously, that's a separate topic than what your committee worked on, but it is something that we can look at.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay?
Just some of the other feedback from some of the schools. There were loss of teachers, some, two schools added teachers within two years of implementation. Teachers would still have the five teaching periods, who would work in a prep each day within the block. It also, it actually allows science teachers to teach five classes instead of the four that they currently do, because they have to figure in the lab as a teaching time.
Yeah, science, science takes the biggest hit here, it was actually a lot of time, however, it's all the time. So having that block period with activities, not just on your lab day, but basically every day, so it is hitting it a little bit hard. However, with that, you know, when a science teacher teaches a class at the lab, they're given a 1.25 teaching time. This will reduce it to a one, and now they can handle five courses. Not that it should be about money, by any means, however, but from a personal science department, we run seventy-two courses, one credit course, right now, a block schedule should be able to run eighty, current schedule. So that would obviously increase opportunities for kids. It also, as Barbara mentioned earlier, reduces tremendously on study halls, because scheduling, they don't have science teachers.
And it does allow opportunities to share staff between the high schools. I think someone, it wasn't me, that mentioned perhaps even some of the languages where we haven't gotten, in one high school, enough enrollment to support offering that language, it would allow that opportunity. And I know even now that we have the newcomer academy for our English language learners, that's been difficult to schedule, simply because the two high schools are on very different schedules at the moment. And, you know, I just want to say, it really was a collaborative effort, both high schools worked together. This was something, you know, that we spent a lot of time thinking about, and both high schools felt strongly about this being, what would that serve our students?
Okay. Any questions? Ms. Keys, then Ms. Mosby, then Mr. Meek.
As far as the prep time, is it the same amount of time or is it longer?
No, it'll be actually half of a block, is how it'll work. So that way you can put it in every day. So it'll actually only be half of a block period would be the prep time, and likely the other half of that would be a collaborative time to work on instruction with your colleagues and review student assessment data and make instructional decisions as part of that collaborative team.
Okay, Ms. Mosby?
Yes. Well, I'm in agreement that both high schools should be on the same schedule, and I'm glad to see that you've addressed a couple of concerns that I had on curriculum, meeting with the special needs and ADHD, and with the professional development and how extensive that would be. I just want to get clear on how this will be communicated to the public, you know, to the parents, students, community in general, because, you know, we're going into an eighty-eight minute, you know, time span, so I'm just, I just want to figure out how we're going to get this out to the public, to those parents, students, and others, so that they will know that this change is going to take place.
I think, most importantly, once the board votes, I think the key is we would obviously make this PowerPoint available to parents, would be key, and I think it would be a year-long campaign, similar to what was done when we were introducing the Common Core. I know, I looked at some of the research from the Fairfield Public Schools, who are starting the block schedule this coming September, and a couple of things they did, they had a parent night at each high school early in the fall, not in June, when we're going to start in September, but, you know, in September, both high schools have back-to-school nights. I think that would be a time when we could first introduce it, have some parent workshops, talk about what that would look like, talk about how that might impact the homework load, or how it might look different at home. The other thing that Fairfield did that I thought was kind of interesting, that I would advocate for, is they actually did a couple of days, I want to say two days, this current school year as a pilot for the whole school community, just to get a sense of what that would feel like the following year, and I thought that that would be a great way to sort of introduce students the next year.
I think their practice date was actually last week.
Yeah.
That's an excellent idea. Okay, so in committee, I guess I was assuming the kids had perfect attendance, but then you mentioned the word skipping. How does that, I know there, we used to have a denial of credit policy, you're going to have to adjust that, right?
Correct. There is another committee, that's not us, but I am in communication with that committee talking about attendance, that the attendance policy as a whole is something they're looking at, and certainly, yes, it would have to be adjusted in terms of even the number of days, because right now, it just wouldn't work with what...
Well, if you did it linearly, there'd be like no landing room for...
Right, so, I mean, I think there's a committee that's looking at that, who's aware of what we are proposing.
I happen to be on that committee, too. So what we'll do is, based on, if we have a blessing and approval, we can't do anything with that now, obviously, until the schedule's approved. If the schedule's approved, then we can start to look at some ways in collaboration with this committee, so that we can figure out what is fair for students, because we know students are not perfect, and they mess up and they make mistakes, as we all did as children. So we'll figure out what is the trend, what's going on with our neighbors such as Fairfield, and looking at Stanford, looking at AITE, just to get a grasp of what's going on in the area, what people are doing for denial of credits, and how they're addressing that situation, similarly to the way we looked at the scheduling, doing our research, seeing what's going on in the area, and figuring out what's best for the students and parents of the hall.
Thank you. Any other questions, Ms. Keys?
Couple things I just want to go over briefly. I think it's great if we have a pilot first, just to kind of work out the kinks, if that's possible, but I was kind of going through the benefits and challenges that you had mentioned. Fewer study halls, I think is fabulous. I mean, I've had kids, I have one that graduated, another one that's in high school now, and I think too many study halls is not a good thing. So I think having less would be great, and there's not a lot of learning going on. I know a lot of the kids do their homework, but some do, some don't, so I don't know how beneficial it is to have as many study halls as we have now. As far as fewer whole-school transitions, less time in the hall, I was writing some notes just before you were speaking, I'm thinking, the behavioral issues happen when you have the transition. It happens in elementary, middle school, as well as high school, so I think if you have less transitions, you definitely will have less, I would believe, less behavioral issues going on if you have kids roaming in the halls, less of that. As far as some of the challenges, I think it's really important and key that we have more PD for this, and we definitely have to find a way that we can work on professional development. I know that's costly, however, I think we need to figure out a way to make that work. And I think as far as the impact of teacher and student absence, I'm glad that you put both, as far as teacher, because that affects students, it's vice versa, it kind of works both ways. But I think as a district, we just really need to monitor that, because the more absences you have, the less learning time, the less instructional time we have for our kids in school. But thank you, and I'm glad it was a collaborative effort, I'm glad that you were able to visit a lot of these other schools, so you could see what's going on and how this could possibly work for us. Thank you.
Other questions? Okay, Chairman entertained a motion to approve the proposal to go to block scheduling sixteen-seventeen. It's moved by Mr. Kessimas, second by Ms. Rivas. This is a discussion. I would like to note first that the curriculum committee recommended approval of this recommendation, that the principals of both of our high schools are here, and they are strongly supportive of the proposal, both Mr. Roberts and Ms. Corishet. And one thing also to note is that I think everybody acknowledges that the professional development aspect of this is critical, and so by taking a year to do this, and I love the idea of, you know, starting to get people educated about what's coming, like this fall when they come into school, and then a test run so people can see what it's like. And I would also just note that if for some reason something goes wrong in this process, we don't think that the PD is working, we're not ready, we could always push it back a little bit if we needed to do that. I don't think we will, but just for anybody who's concerned, you know, Bruce had raised the issue of, you know, is the PD going to be sufficient? If for some reason we think that we need more time to do it, we can take more time if we have to. My preference is to put it in sixteen, but we had a similar situation when we were adopting the new teacher and principal evaluation systems. It took a little longer than we thought it would to get it done, so we delayed it a little bit, we made sure we did it right. So I think you, I think you guys have done a terrific job on this, and the number of benefits. I particularly also want to thank you, in addition to the slides they added in, for providing us with the additional research information that had looked at the effectiveness of this process, because in addition to the things already noted, you know, that disciplinary referrals drop, tends to be more active student engagement during classes, students tend to complete more classes, and it opens up more opportunities. That's really amazing that you can go from seventy-two to eighty science offerings under this. So, you know, according to the research, this study by Kennedy and Reddick, dropout rates have been reduced, special education resource students benefit from, you know, the four classes a day instead of being overloaded with seven or eight. You know, it's just, it's terrific, and it is a continuation of improvements being made to the schools. Tony Dodona started talking about high school reform, I think when I first got on this board, three and a half years ago, you were talking about it, and it was like, it's coming, it's coming, well, here it is. Okay? And we laid the groundwork for it with the Common Core and a lot of other pieces that we've been putting together. The block scheduling is sort of the next logical thing along the line. So, again, also, you know, one of the things that I enjoyed at the curriculum meeting was the various staff people from Norwalk High and Brian McMahon talking about, you know, I didn't even know those guys until recently, and now you're building this relationship between the two high schools. They were talking about, you know, creating common materials to put up on the Google web, Google something, the cloud, you know, Google Cloud, that could be shared between the two high schools. So I think this, what you've done in creating this program is a good indication of the benefits we'll get out of it when it's, when you're all in the same schedule. Anything else? All right, hearing that, we'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of approving the resolution, please indicate. And it is unanimous, thank you very much, and thank you for great work. All right, now we move on to information and reports. First one is April 2015 monthly financial report. Mr. Roodel, are we looking?
Through the first ten months, we have expended $118.5 million against an adjusted budget of $168.4, so we've spent just over seventy percent of our budget. When you factor in year-end entries, we would be at approximately eighty-two percent of our budget.
Okay, so overall, are we still trending?
Still looking good.
Okay, so something like a one percent under?
About one percent right now.
Okay, great. Any questions? Mr. Meek?
Good luck to you down the road.
Up, thank you.
Before you leave, can you put the current month budget in this report?
Sure.
In a column, if it fits. I don't make too much, but that would really help to see where we're missing in a month.
Sure.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? As long as you're standing there at the podium, and I know this isn't the last time we're going to see you, we're going to hold you to June 30th so we get this budget done.
July 30th.
July 30th, that's even better, and I know, I know we'll get the budget...
July 3rd.
July 3rd, July 3rd, all right, that's all right.
Three more days.
You've got to get the budget done by June 30th, I know you're going to stick with this and get that done. I just wanted to note, as long as I got you standing there, that, you know, Elio Longo came in here, and then he brought you in here, and then Westport stole him away like Weston stealing you. But between the two of you, with him starting the groundwork and digging this school system out of utter financial chaos that it was in, you know, I'll never forget, a couple of months after I took office, Elio discovering the $4 million shortfall, and then your work in rationalizing our budget process, getting control over our spending, saving us millions of dollars, really implementing, for the first time, long-term budgeting, the three-year budgeting cycle that we now run through, has been phenomenal, and, you know, I wish you the best of luck, and I'm really mad at Weston, but I know this is a great opportunity for you, and best of luck in the competition.
Thank you very much.
All right, yes, Mr. Mayer?
Thank you, I just want to echo those sentiments, and the two years that we've worked on budgets together, that Rich has been here, were absolutely pleasurable. I think it was well-thought-out and everybody worked together, probably the best that I can ever remember, and so I want to thank Rich as well, and thank the board as well for putting together a very workable budget and allowing us to move forward and give us, give the schools everything that they needed, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rich.
I think the board also, I hope the public realizes, Rich has not just been a numbers cruncher. We talk about budget, but Rich has been behind a lot of other things in the district that you'll be working with. He certainly was behind the facility study, which is going to be a very, very important document that we'll be looking at in the very, very near future, and I'm kind of, some trepidation of that, he's gone away, but I know that his design and his direction for that was very, very important. The other things that he very helped us with is we started privatization, custodial services, he was very creative in that area. And so, and also, I think the crowning jewel before he left is the bus contract, the developed, which saved a significant amount of money for next year, and I think in a very, very creative way helps us control transportation costs. So all of those things beyond numbers crunching, I think have been a real asset and a gift to the district.
Ms. Keys?
I share everyone's sentiments as well, but, Rich, you've been with us three years?
Yeah.
Just about three years. I just admire your calmness. You're really just very relaxed, but very thorough, and just a real asset here. I mean, it certainly is our loss and Weston's gain, but we definitely wish you the best of luck, and thank you for three years. I mean, you've worked really hard, really diligent, and I know that they have one board meeting a month, right? Okay. I'll come visit sometime. Thank you.
All right. Okay, next item on the agenda is discussion of naming Tracy Elementary School Gymnasium in honor of Dr. Press Navich. There's a letter in the file from Ms. Kaplan, who addressed the report on this issue. I asked Mr. Dodona to get me the policy so we could review what the policy is. The policy is fairly open-ended, it's Policy 1170, says the Board of Education is committed to recognizing and honoring citizens, students, staff, and groups whose distinguished or exceptional achievements benefit the school system. Persons so honored may include retiring staff and board members who have contributed to the school system over an extended period of time. The board may act to recognition at board meetings, letters of recognition, or other appropriate methods. Apparently, that is the section which has been used, you know, we've named some rooms in this building and other places. I think the most recent thing was the Center for Global Studies, where it was the Jassy Auditorium. So it is within the, the capacity of the board to, to recognize individuals like this. So I thought I'd throw it open for discussion and see what, what board members would like to do. Mr. Kassimus?
I met Paul Krasnawicz probably about sixteen, seventeen years ago, was on Pop Warner football field. I didn't know who he was. My son played football. It was his first time out, he was eight years old, and Paul was his coach. I, I can't tell you enough how, how thankful I am that Paul took him under his wing, happened to find out that Drew, his son, was playing together with my son, and they played Pop Warner together, they went to middle school together, they played Norwalk High together. Drew was the quarterback, my son was the receiver, and they played for, I don't know, about ten years together. Drew went on to, I think, Marshall? No, where did he, yeah, to play football, and my son went on to Eastern and played football. And that to me is a legacy to Paul, because he cared so much, he just pours himself into all the kids. And I found out later on that he was a principal of Tracy's school, but I am in favor of this and I think we really need to do this for him. He's a great man.
Any other questions or comments?
I didn't have Dr. Krasnawicz at Norwalk High, but he came along while I was there and, you know, beat McMahon one year, so I can support his, I can support his nomination for this.
I'm dating myself, but I, I was at Norwalk High School at the same time he was when he was playing. So I go back forty years with having been familiar with the Krasnawicz name and fame. So the board members, would you, would the board members like to proceed with this now?
I would.
Okay. Well, then the Chair would entertain a motion to, let's see, maybe let me get this right, to name the gymnasium at Tracy's school as the Dr. Paul Krasnawicz Gymnasium, to be noted with an inappropriate plaque above the gym doors. Mr. Kassimus moves. Ms. Rivas seconds. Any discussion? Ms. Most, I'm sorry, Ms. Murray?
I'm thinking that we need to make a motion to move this to an action item, and then we can go forward and make the proposal.
Yes, you're right. This is just listed as discussion. So why don't we, you withdraw your motion?
Yeah, withdraw.
Okay. Now, who would like to make the mo, all right. Mr. Kassimus moves to make this an action item. All right, seconded by Ms. Rivas. We'll do this procedurally correctly. All in favor of that motion, please indicate. It's unanimous. Now, we'll return to the motion originally made by Mr. Kassimus and seconded by Ms. Rivas. Is there further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, we will proceed to a vote. All in favor of naming the gymnasium in honor of Dr. Paul Krasnawicz at Tracy, please indicate. Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations. Next item is just a notice. The, the Curriculum Instruction Committee has voted to approve the new world languages and social studies materials, which are detailed in the reports in the packet by a obscure state statute, which Mr. Dodona educated me about a couple of years ago. You're required to put a notice of the intention on one board meeting agenda, and then you can vote on it at the next board meeting.
And the vote at the next meeting has to be by two-thirds of the, the board members present at that meeting?
Correct. So all the background material is in there. Again, these are very thoroughly developed, again, by a very broad-ranging team of teachers, administrators from across the school system. Particularly, I would just note that in both cases, particularly with the, with the language arts, but to some extent with social studies as well, the teachers actually began implementing this new curriculum on their own this year to sort of test it out, see how it worked, and got very good feedback from it. And so what we're doing here is providing them with the tools that they need to spread it throughout the whole system. The total cost of it is, the numbers are in the file, it's like three hundred and seventy thousand dollars or something. There's over four hundred thousand dollars in our capital budget for the support of those textbooks, and the money's already in the budget to support these. And so if there's any questions, we can deal with those, but otherwise we'll just, we'll bring this all back for the June two meeting, I think?
Right.
Where we'll vote on adoption. Okay. All right, let's see. Next item is Finance Committee Meeting Report. Ms. Murray?
Yes?
Would you like to give me a report?
It's also in the.
There is a report in the packet.
I think what happened was that the administration felt that that was such a great meeting, so detailed, covered that they wanted to share it with the whole board. I believe that premise of having it on the agenda.
Okay. And we all do have the report in the packet.
And also too is that we did have, I know if, Rich, you'd like to highlight the fact of it is, and, Ms. Connolly, if anything that you felt, sitting there, and other board members that were present, that felt that we needed to hear as a board, as a whole board, please, by all means, reject at this point.
You know, Rich, anything you wanted, you want to underscore or highlight?
No, just that Norwalk's not hello to this. We did benchmarking into other districts. You look at our identified population specialty students, it's about nine percent of the high schools, which is really aligned in places like Meredith and West Hartford.
Okay, so.
Yeah, I think the, the important thing is to look at trends, and it's obvious the trends now, not only here in Norwalk, but really throughout the state and the nation, is a huge mental health issue, behavioral mental health issues, particularly with early adolescents across all demographics and across both genders. And as we look at how we can reduce the number of out placements, I think we have to take a look at developing quality programs so we can hold some of these children here in our district. And to that end, we talked the other, at the meeting on Thursday night about the pilot program at Rotan next year, which would be a therapeutic program, serving about eight children. And I, my suggestions to the district is look at that as a prototype, and if it works as we, to be planning several programs like this. And it's more than just hiring a teacher and, and a classroom. It means, it means surrounding these children with a total therapeutic program, a psychologist, a social worker on a full-time basis. And to that end, I got a, I went out and I met with the principal at Rotan today, take a look at the classroom that they plan to use and the adjoining room that will be used for the, for the school psychologist and the social worker, and to see what kind of renovations and furnishings he needs for that room. And I met with Richard today to make sure that we started working on that now, it doesn't become a, you know, a late August type of thing. There's some renovations, painting, furnishings need to be ordered, and as I understand that the staffing, we're going to be, we're going to be interviewing and reviewing staffing for that program the first week in June. So I'm hopeful that by the, by the beginning of the next school year, I'm not talking September, but early July, everything will be in place. Both staffing, the room will be, you know, physically done what needs to be done on it.
Okay.
And I think also, as I'm thinking about it, I did ask for the actual presentation to be put in the board pack.
Right. And it is in here.
It is in there. So I think that was part of it. So thank you for highlighting that.
Okay. And it was a good, but thank you for including that in the packet, it's very thorough. Ryan?
Yeah, attended the meeting as well, it was very well-attended by the public. In fact, we probably didn't have enough chairs for all the folks who came. They were very interested. I, being new here, I learned a lot. I actually think the data bears out that we should really, without sacrificing quality anywhere, we should really look to see how Danbury is doing much better, much, much better than us, and returning those savings back to other programs to get more bang for the buck. I was also, as I still try to admit, I still want to learn a lot more about the process, but I, I still walked away with feeling like this PPT process has no parliamentary rule to it whatsoever. It's a group of minds meeting by consensus, there's no rules, and I just find in any situation like that, you're necessarily going to have scope creep and cost overruns when you have any kind of process that doesn't have clear definition on hierarchies and how it, how it should be conducted and moved on to the next group if needed. So I, I don't know if it's in our power, but I, I would like to see some stronger rule put into place there. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next item on the agenda is Committee Reports. We just got the Committee Report from Finance. Mr. Kassimus?
Nothing.
Report, all right. Curriculum, you got our report too, because it's what's on tonight's agenda. Policy?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Lyons. First of all, I want to thank, personally thank Brenda for all of her hard work, diligence, for every policy meeting, coming prepared, helping me out with policies and the whole policy committee. So I just want to thank you personally. I haven't thanked you in public, but I wanted to do so. We did discuss tonight the outdoor recess guidelines, Policy six-one-four-two-point-six-one. That's been in the works for months now, several months. As I mentioned in other meetings, we had a whole committee set up. Tony Dodona was instrumental in getting principals, assistant principals, and staff from various schools for them to meet. They met several times over the past couple of months. They came back to the policy committee with suggestions. We put that into policy, so tonight we actually had it written up, we discussed it in policy as a group, we unanimously approved it. So the next step for us in order to put an action item on this is to have it come to the full board for our next meeting for discussion. Then the following meeting, hopefully we can put that in place as an action item, and it should happen probably for, for the fall, for September, end of August, beginning of September.
Okay, good.
We also discussed, Ralph had a PowerPoint presentation on Bring Your Own Device, which is BYOD. We discussed it before, but this time we had more at-length discussion about it. It's still in the works, we still have to work out the kinks. Ralph was fabulous tonight in really going through some of the steps as far as some of our students bringing their own device to school, some of the pros and cons of that. We're still exploring that in our committee right now, and we'll be back to the full board for final discussion, more discussion on it. As far as what's happening in June, we're still going to work on that. We've spoken to Bruce Morris, we were hoping he was going to be able to come this evening but couldn't, but we would like for him to come to a policy committee meeting, hopefully within the next month or two, in regards to our bullying policy. And that's it.
Okay, good. You're busy.
Busy, mhm.
Let's see, Mr. Barbas, we're, we're done with everything and you just.
Well, we're done, but we've got to start.
We have to start again.
We've got to start, yeah. So we did get a letter dated May fourteenth from the State of Connecticut announcing the timeline for how negotiations are to be conducted with the National Federation of Teachers. The whole timeline is driven by our budget submission date, so with the budget submission date of January fifteen, two thousand and sixteen, we are, under state statute, supposed to start negotiations on June nineteenth. And if we do not have an agreement by August eighth, mediation would start at that time. And if we cannot get a mediator to get us to come to a settlement, we would begin arbitration hearings on September second. So that's the timeline, this is exactly what we went through before, and also with NASA, we actually went into mediation last year. So this is, you know, we, we obviously need to begin our process, and what's different this time with the NFT versus last year, is last year it was just really a salary and benefits re-opener. This time it's the full contract, so there, there's everything, from language to work rules, you know, it's the whole kit and caboodle. So, you know, we have been, had a dialogue with Mr. Mallion, the president of the NFT, about, you know, we need to start talking about these issues. I have told him, you know, I've talked to Bob Deluski and Tom Mooney, or Bob Deluski and Tom Mooney, our attorney, our labor attorney, as well as our director of HR, as to what some of the issues we, we, you know, want to put on the table. And we've kind of suggested these are the things we will want to review, and we're, I think at this point, waiting to hear back from him, and we will start some, you know, I mean, we've got time, which, although June nineteenth, I guess is just a month away, but, you know, we're trying to start getting a dialogue going and make a plan so we can go into formal negotiations.
Okay. All right. Let's see, thank you all. Next item is Board Member Announcements. Any announcements? Ms. Mostby?
Yes, tomorrow, on, on May twentieth, the, at NOG High School, the African-American Parent Group and the NOG Chapter, the NWCCP are cosponsoring a film titled Urban Encounters. And it's going to be a twenty-minute film, and it's, and then there'll be a discussion afterwards, and they have a panel where they invite the community leaders, students, the police officers, and Carl Clay will be the moderator, and they'll have a discussion, getting, you know, discussing the film, and, and, and it's a deep discussion about our youth in the police community. With all that's been going on recently, I think, you know, this is a very good start to start, you know, embracing our youth with, with the police. And it's at NOG High School, and it starts at six-thirty, and as I stated before, it's being sponsoring, sponsored by African-American Parents Group and the NOG Chapter of the NWCP. And I just want to mention too, last board meeting, I was not able to attend, but I wanted to mention that prior to that, I went to the Best Buddies Medallion myself, we went there to their little talent show, and it was wonderful, it was great, and I encourage more people to go and see that, and if we can get some funding into a line budget item for that, that would be wonderful. Those kids were great, and it was just to see them out there, and their parents were excited, and, and they were wonderful, so I just wanted to at least share that with the board and say that the Best Buddies, you know, that, that, that group was really, you know.
Does that group have an advisor or someone that works with it at each high school?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I was, okay. Yeah, okay.
Ms. Murphy? Yes, the, the principal, Brian McMahon.
Ms. Murphy, is the advisor?
Okay.
And?
And Norwalk High School, the, you know, the advisor is there?
Who's at Norwalk High School?
I think it's, I'm not sure, I'll change.
Okay. We'll work.
Right. But it's something I think that we all need to, really, it was, it was wonderful, it was good.
Anything else? Ms. Keys?
Yes, last week, Mr. Barbas and I went to the South Norwalk Community Center, and we visited after the bell. I think all board members were invited. We were able to, luckily, we were able to attend. Very impressed. They have two classrooms, looking to possibly have a third classroom, but we were able to meet some of the teachers there, some of the kids, saw some of the kids in action. I believe the hours are three to five, three to six?
Three to six.
Three to six PM. So I highly encourage if anybody hasn't been able to attend to, to try to check that out, because they really have a great program going. There was something else I needed to say, I'm trying to remember. Yes, for our next meeting, we will be having our meeting, not here, but we will be having it at Norwalk High School in the community room. The meeting will start at seven o'clock. Little Bear Cafe is going to have dinner for board members, which will be starting at six-thirty for our next meeting, but again, our next actual board meeting will be at seven o'clock at Norwalk High School in the community room, which I believe is on the lower level. What we're trying to do is, this is our first time having, at least on this board, having some of our meetings at different locations other than at City Hall, so we're hoping our next meeting can be on the other side at Brian McMahon High School. So we will keep everybody updated once we can confirm that. And that's it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This Friday, from ten o'clock until one o'clock in the afternoon in the community room.
Here.
Here, thank you. We are having a job fair with the trades unions. We're bringing in the carpenters' union, the plumbers' unions, electricians, and they're going to meet with the young people, and thank you, Mr. Connolly, for getting the information out through the public school system. We're going to be bringing in students from Briggs, from Norwalk High School, and from Brian McMahon, to learn about the trades. Not everybody is going to end up going to college, we understand that, but the trades union has a wonderful program, I've called it Earn While You Learn. They can take a young person, or an older person for that matter, teach them, for instance, carpentry, starting from the ground floor up and learning as they work, and then they have programs where they go to class at night, and the classes, classroom training is free. They don't get paid while they're going to class, but they get paid while they're working during the day. And what they do is that after about, I think, four or five years, I'm not sure exactly how many, the person will receive their certificate from the State of Connecticut that they're a certified plumber, certified carpenter, and able to go to work on a, a full-time basis. It's a, it's a great program, and we're excited about it, because, as I said, a lot of young people probably don't know about the trades, and if you look around Norwalk, you'll see there's a lot of developments. you'll see there's a lot of developments, a lot of projects going on, and they're looking for people. There's a shortage of plumbers, shortage of carpenters, shortage of electricians, and we're bringing the trades to the young people, so that they can see what it might be, and earn a very, very good living after a few years. So, just thank you for, Mr. Connolly, for getting the word out through the schools and helping for transportation to bring some of the young people here. Thank you.
Okay. You're next.
Yep.
Mr. Barbas?
I did, I wanted, I wanted to just make mention as well, with Heidi, we had a great time seeing the community center in action, and I think anyone who saw this in action would realize what a great program it was. There were certified teachers in there. These kids were really engaged. If anything, a couple of these kids I saw, they were yawning. They were tired. You know, they had been, like, in school all day, and they were learning more, and they were ready to call it a day, I think, but it was really great. We also, a bunch of us had also been to the opening, the official opening, which was terrific. But something I, I was going to email the board, and I just didn't have a chance. I had the most powerful experience yesterday. The PTOC has organized a program to get different political leaders in town, but I think the Board of Ed members to go read in schools, and obviously, a lot of people have work conflicts and are in position to, but I work for myself, so I'm in a position to. So, I went to Tracy School. The mayor and I were both there, actually. Mayor, a graduate of Tracy School. And anyway, so initially, I was taken into a kindergarten classroom. These kids were really cute, and they were really excited, and, you know, we read about this wishy-washy's farm, and, you know, these kids told me how much they were going to read this summer, and anyway, they were all enthusiastic. It was really exciting, you know, it's exactly as you would expect. What you would not expect was, after that, I was supposed to go read in a fifth-grade class, but somehow, the CISD had me go into a self-contained special ed classroom. And it was the most powerful experience I've had, I think, as a board member so far. These kids were, had everything. I mean, you know, we're talking about behavior issues, attention deficit, learning disabled, the works, and obviously, you know, and many of them, actually, thanks to the woman who runs the program there, many of these kids are mainstream part of the time, some of them, next year, will be going mainstream, but, I mean, I was crying. It was so amazing to see these people and our aides in action. It was unbelievable, and I can't tell, I think, everybody in this room, everyone on this board, should make the time and see this, because if you don't see it with your own eyes, I don't think you'd believe it. So, I want to thank the PTOC and Akisha Kasimir for organizing that. Otherwise, I would never have done that, and it was just, it totally changed my perspective. So, thank you.
Excellent.
So...
Any other comments?
Yes.
Yes, Ms. Rivas?
I want to thank Mr. Barbas for your words, you know, you said, it is, it is very moving to see, to see something that then, so much need that these children have, and that's why it is such great importance to me, because I'm very passionate about this particular topic and field, and that's why it was important to me, so when they're older, you know, with the socialization piece, with being able to be working within society, that's why things like the Best Buddies Club, that focuses on children with ADD or whatever kind of issues they might have, and ostracized if they are our children, too. That's why it's so important that board members do, are supportive of this, and you need to see that, when they had their talent show, how important it was that people were in the audience, looking at them perform, and, and how hard it was to either sing a song or put on an outfit or a costume, or how someone would tumble off a stage, and it would be okay. And, you know, it's, it's, it's very, it's very moving, and as board members, we really need to visit classrooms and, and do this, so that we see that what we're doing, what we're doing impacts the lives of so, so many people and families, and that's why we want all of our children to, to be successful and succeed. And, yeah, it brings tears to my heart, too, to know this about us, especially, that's why it's such a, such a wonderful thing, and we do have a lot of important staff that play a big role. They're in the forefronts. They're right there, because they're, the parents are there, but then, yet, our staff is there. That's why we have to make sure that they have the resources and everything they need to accomplish that, and I'm very happy you said that, made my day today. So, thank you, Mr. Barbas.
You're welcome.
I'll note, I'm, I'm signed up to do some reading to a kindergarten class at Silvermine on Friday, and I took, and a year ago, I got my Silvermine reads to, or Norwalk reads to Silvermine plant, which was this little plant, and I took pictures of it today. It's now a big plant. It's still growing, and I water it and, you know, give it food and stuff to keep it going. So, I really enjoyed doing that myself last year, and I'm looking forward to going back to Silvermine again this Friday. All right. We'll now proceed to approval of minutes of the May 5 meeting. Mr. Kasimis moves to approve. Is there a second? Ms. Keys, second. Any changes, corrections?
I have a...
Mr. Kasimis?
Question for Mr. Barbas. On page four, I don't know if I was the one who moved to approve the resolution. Do you remember? Are you kidding? I did not have, I did not have that kind of memory already. It doesn't really matter. It says you seconded, but it doesn't really matter, because I know it's under your jurisdiction, so I figured maybe you're the one who did.
Page, which page already?
Is this page?
Page four, to approve the agreement between, you know, the food service workers.
Oh.
Since it was your committee, I would not have...
Oh, okay.
I would not have motioned.
So, it could have been me, and maybe you...
Yeah, I think I may have seconded.
All right. So, let's, let's flip that to say Barbas moved, Kasimis seconded.
Take the glory.
Okay.
Not a big deal, but I usually don't.
Let me tell you, Brian.
All right. Any other changes, corrections? All right, then we'll proceed to a vote. All in favor approving the minutes, please indicate. And all opposed? Abstentions? Two abstentions, and minutes are approved. All right.